Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
All right, you guys can all take a seat. All right, first I would like to wish you all, all of Omaha, a Happy New Year. I'm sure we can all agree that 2021 was an extraordinary year. In fact, I'm confident that every person in this room has lost someone in 2021. As for me, I lost two individuals that worked tirelessly with me on my campaign. And that was Jesse Statham, my campaign manager, and Gary Brown, my photographer. I will miss them both, and you see them on the screen there. At this time, I would like to, like everyone, to dedicate 30 seconds of silence as we honor loved ones that we lost in 2021. Thank you. Lastly, I would like to play this video and encourage Omaha that when we believe we can do all things to ensure a better life. Thank you.
Good afternoon, welcome to Omaha City Council. I also want to wish you all a Happy New Year. I appreciate you being here today. We look forward to hearing your testimony on any items. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off or leave the microphone.
An affidavit of publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on these twelve legislative chambers.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council area, Jovan 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is the waiver of the president's own development to allow a four forty acre, one hundred and nine lot subdivision to move forward. There's now sewerability available to this particular property. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mrs. Johnson, you're recognized. Turn your light on.
Sorry about that.
Okay. No other lights? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Miller Commons Replat Two with a waiver for lot frontage located north of 13th and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Katie Underwood, 2111 South 67th Street. Civil engineer for the project and happy to answer any questions if anyone has any. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Skyridge Villas located at 1999 Veterans Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today.
Yes, Mr. President. Members of the council area, Jovan 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a 23 acre development located at the southeast corner of Veterans Drive and Honeysuckle Drive in Old Elkhorn. This will be 81 single-family lots. I'm simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today on number eight? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine through sixteen relate to the Crossroads, and there is a request to postpone these items to the January 25th meeting.
The public hearing and vote on items nine through sixteen are today. As the city clerk has noted, the applicant has requested these items be laid over until September 25th, and that is the intention of the city council. And we'll continue the public hearing that day. Because it has been advertised as a public hearing, though, if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item today, they may. But we would highly encourage you to save those remarks until we have a broader discussion on the topic on September 25th. Having said that, I think the applicant is here, and I'll call up proponents. What did I say?
Don't do that to us, Pete.
I might have caused you a heart attack there, huh? It won't be that long. We're talking on January 25th. Thank you for the correction.
Thanks, Mr. President. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of KJ Crossroads Venture. Like Councilman Festerson indicated, we've asked for layover till January 25th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anything comes up during the public hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you. I will call any other proponents that want to speak. Seeing none, any opponents that want to speak today? Do we have someone by Zoom?
I'm sorry, you want number nine?
We're on nine through sixteen, but I would highly encourage you to hold your remarks until the 25th, because that's when we'll have the public hearing and continue until that day.
I was yours on the 25th.
Okay.
All right, just clarifying.
Sure, thank you. Do we, I think we have a, do we have someone by Zoom who's an opponent, is that correct? Mr. Provda, would you like to speak today, or would you like to reserve your remarks for the 25th?
I'm going to reserve my remarks for the 25th.
Okay, thank you. And there's one last call for opponents today. All right, seeing none, I would propose that we do lay this over until the 25th and continue the public hearing. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item seventeen, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3724 Farnum Street from G C District to M B D District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number seventeen is today. Proponents, please.
Jeremy Carlson, Slate Architecture, 3624 Farnum, here on behalf of the owner.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Quick question, Jeremy? Sorry. So explain to everybody listening out there what this Bob and Willie's Wonder Bowl is.
It's miniature bowling, so it's kind of a combination of bowling and ski ball. So it's a bar lounge with live, or that's kind of the entertainment value to it is bowling.
And you got an outdoor patio there as well?
There is an outdoor patio, correct.
When I drive by, I see, and keeping an eye on the construction going on, and that, that's going to be a neat thing in Blackstone. I know years ago, my dad's post office was right just to the west of there. And this place used to be, it used to be called Backwoods, which was a camping and fishing, and it was owned by a teacher at Cathedral High School. Their family, the Sitzmans, so it's great to see the transformation in Blackstone, but also what you're doing there. So I wish you the best of luck and encourage people when they're blacks, want to do a little bowling. It should be pretty cool.
Great, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Sounds like a motion.
Item number seventeen.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventeen is approved, seven to zero. Item eighteen, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3717 and 3721 Dodge Street from R8 District to G O District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Ryan Basie, 3737 Dodge Street. Here to answer any questions on that.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eighteen is approved, seven to zero. Item nineteen, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the P U R overlay district located at 13325 Millard Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Ryan Curtis, 16717 Marcy Circle, with Leo A. Daley, architecture, here on behalf of the owner, for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nineteen is approved, seven to zero. Items twenty and twenty-one can be considered together for a property located at 102nd and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. These are ordinances to rezone this property from C C District to G C District to C C District to G C District.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty and twenty-one are today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road, on behalf of the applicant. Just quickly, what's going on? This is the site out by Top Golf, out by West Roads, once I come online here. There we go. What's being requested is in connection with the replat, we have now three lots out here. We're actually going to snip off a side of this currently zoned C C and make that G C. And then in connection with this G C area, that's going to be zoned, rezoned to C C to kind of correspond with the new lot lines that are taking place out here. So here for any questions. No, no new proposed uses just yet. This is more just to clean up on the zoning side of things.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed? Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items twenty-two and twenty-three can be considered together for a property located at 2002 Vinton Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty-two, an ordinance to rezone this property from G C District to M B D District. Item twenty-three, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the N C E C District to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two and twenty-three is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom, Mr. Luce. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Try that. Well, one second there. I can see you talking, but we can't hear you yet. We'll try, we'll try the mute button here one more time. You want to try it on your end? We show you as being off mute. Okay, try that. Could I venture a guess that you're here to answer questions about the project? Want to nod your head? All right, we got, we got you. We'll keep working on the button, but we, we understand your testimony and support. Are there any other proponents in the audience that want to speak today while we try to handle the mute button there? Seeing none, we'll ask for opponents. Seeing none, I think we're okay to close public hearing. Council members. No further questions? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
You did a great job with your testimony. Thanks for dialing in. We appreciate it.
Item twenty-four, a resolution to approve the Skylark Development Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 101115 and 117 South 38th Avenue in an amount up to $3,800,000.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-four is today. Similar to the previous item, we know the applicant has requested that this item be delayed today, and that's our intention. So it has been advertised for public hearing, and if folks are here and want to speak on this item, they may. But we would, we would highly encourage you to hold your comments until we continue the public hearing as we think this proposal might change a little bit. Having said that, I'll recognize proponents and the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, as President Festerson mentioned, we have requested a layover till March 1. Just to finalize some project details, if there are any questions on that matter, we're here to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. I'm sorry, your name and address for the...
Jessica Thomas, 10250 Regency Circle.
All right. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. President. Council member Steven Sykes, 1023 North 64th Street here in Omaha, representing the project team and applicant. If there are any questions, be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents that want to speak today? Now, I'll remind, I'll remind folks speaking today that if you speak on this item today, traditionally, we don't recognize it for... Okay, Larry, this is for you.
Repeat that, please.
This item will be laid over until March 1st. I'd encourage you to hold your remarks until then. Otherwise, your remarks given today, it probably wouldn't be allowed the second time. The proposal's going to change, and you might want to analyze that and let us know your thoughts on it at that time.
Yeah, and then that'll be a slam-damn "thank you, ma'am." It's over before it's over.
I don't think so. That's, that's the whole point. Okay, any other opponents that want to speak today, or would rather prefer March 1st?
I, I can speak on this today, I think. Louise Humanness, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I see that the total amount for the, that the city's going to forego is $3,800,000. And I think that's a large amount. I'd rather see smaller projects because that's how I see tax, the TIF, that the city's foregoing money for everybody, all of the other public bodies too, won't be able to collect property taxes. And I think maybe the stature, whatever, needs to change where if, if they want to use, the developers want to use tax increment financing, then they need to go to all the public bodies, especially the school board, before the school board, because, I don't know, maybe I should ask the developer if they think it's okay that the, that the kids miss out on this tax money in order for their project to happen. I know, Mr. Festerson, you, Mr. President, you like to talk about the but-for, but I'm not convinced that that's something, especially when the capital campaign that most developers do gather a lot of money. And so maybe they need to, maybe ask some more, for some more money to other developers, or I mean, other investors. But I think that having the city council forego property taxes for other public bodies is a big mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, council members? And continue the public hearing, correct? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item twenty-five, a resolution to approve the Saddle Creek Voitman Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 609 South 48th Street in an amount up to $8,161,202.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-five is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley?
Good afternoon, Bridget Hadley, City Planning. Before you is the redevelopment project plan for the approximately three acre site. All right. So it's a site that is shaded in blue. And to give the bearings, this is Leavenworth Street, South Saddle Creek, and then Leavenworth headed west, going this direction. This direction is north, and then this is south. So this is the southern tip of the former Omaha Steel Casting Site. As mentioned, it will be transformed into an innovation hub that envisions commercial space and community, community amenities. This was most recently the former site of a wood shop that was operated by Mike Voitman. The development team of Greenslate Development and Cobal and Company, who is out of Denver, was selected by UNMC to redevelop this property. There will be a ground lease that is entered into by the developers to redevelop these improvements at the site. So I'll show you the preliminary site plan. This is the, the purple basically outlines the footprint of the building. And if I get anything wrong as I speak on this site plan, Brent Beller, who is the attorney representing the developer, can certainly correct me. But as you look at the site plan, that there were two existing buildings, and I think I do have pictures just so that people will know. So this is a picture of one of the existing buildings, the red brick building. And I think this is the southern building on that site. And then this is a rendering of the northern building. So two existing buildings on the site. So those two existing buildings, they were built in the early 1900s. They'll be repurposed for long-term office tenants, co-working spaces, and event and market hall. The north building, which is this one, will be converted into a three-story building with office space. The southwest brick building will remain with, with an interior retrofit. There will be a one-story addition that will be added to connect the north building and the south building, as well as 94 parking stalls. So going back to the site plan and then some of the elevations. So this is one of the renderings of, of the finished product. Another rendering. And then some of what the interior retrofit would look like. The public improvements for this project are basically landscaping, some sidewalks that will be, also be created. A lot of, going back to this, a lot of the street improvement that you see is going to be done by UNMC, the ground landlord of the ground lease. It's currently zoned G C, or excuse me, G I A C I two, but this project and the developers are proposing to opt into the TOD dash one mixed-use or transit-oriented development district to achieve some of the parking options that they want to achieve for the project. The TIF eligible costs for this project are over $25 million, primarily for the rehabilitation of these structures, site work, A and E, and then public improvements. There's going to be a significant job creation that's a part of this particular project, three full-time property management positions, approximately 670 full-time positions. Job types will be in the area of research and development, marketing, janitorial, food service, professional services, and other general management positions. The TIF investment is nearly 8.2 million. The total project investment is over 54 million. The TIF does comply with the community development law and our TIF program, as well as compliance with the master plan by promoting the creation of a full range of jobs, encouraging private investment and infill development, developing underutilized property, creating a more attractive physical environment and promoting pedestrian-friendly streetscapes, and creating a series of high-density mixed-use areas. The TIF committee has given their approval, and with that, I'd ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. With me today is Matt Dwyer and Clay Vanderheiden with Greenslate Development, along with Eric Westman of Alley Pointer, the project architect. I just wanted to briefly touch on a couple highlighted things, and then I'm going to turn it over to Eric just to talk about renderings. This project, being very simple and direct, is cool. This is cool for our city. This is a great example of utilizing a TIF incentive to keep old buildings, make them look cool, don't tear them down, and revitalize an area that five years ago was subject to the EPA and our medieval action plan, and we're out of that. This is why we have TIF, and this is another one of those projects in our city that I think both the developers, city staff, everybody involved should be proud about, because these are cool projects to be a part of. So we're pretty excited about it. This, what's before you right now, is just a general depiction of the entire area. This is all owned by UNMC. They're spearheading this effort. Bridget showed you just the bounds of Lot Two, which is what Greenslate will ground lease from UNMC. UNMC will continue to own this ground. They'll ground lease it to the developer. And then we're actually going to create a condominium regime to bifurcate the land from the improvements. And it's going to be those improvements of which we're going to seek the TIF on. So currently, UNMC, like all public bodies, they don't pay property taxes. So we have elected to, we put a value of about $440,000 on the base value. We then go county, contact the county assessor and kind of get their evaluation. Obviously, those property values don't bit concrete until January usually. They came back and gave us a permanent preliminary value of $420,000. So we're pretty close on what we thought the value would be as far as getting that TIF going. Bridget did a good job talking about the public improvements. I just wanted to clarify a little bit more just on that site plan. So I'm going to get the world right here. North is always top. But this, 46th Street, right here, this will be a publicly dedicated right-of-way. So UNMC is part of their final plat, and I should touch on that. You all have seen the preliminary plat. I think in February, there'll be a submittal for revised and final plat, which will kind of memorialize and obviously create these lots. But effectively, 46th Street will be a publicly dedicated right-of-way. UNMC will do that. To the north of us and to the west of the building, so this is the building, this is north building, the west, these are streets. So these streets will function like any other public streets. I'm going to be careful to say that they're not, they're going to be built to UNMC's street standards in conjunction with city staff and public works input. But they will be privately owned streets, but they will function as public streets. So we do allocate some of those dollars to those, and there'll be easements there for access and that sort of thing, so the general public can use those. It creates the general circulation for the project and overall just kind of helps the project function from a, from a vehicle standpoint. Lastly, Bridget kind of touched on this, is just jobs. Another, you know, TIF gets a lot of heartburn for, for what it is. 670 jobs here. Fifty percent of those are relocated jobs that we're going to work with UNMC for. Fifty percent of those jobs are brand-new, urban infill, along a TOD transit. This is what master planning for our city is all about. So I, I want to show you pictures, but I had nothing to do with the pictures. So Eric should talk about those, because I would completely be taking all his work. So with that, I'll turn it over to Eric, and I'm here for any questions, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eric Westman, Alley Pointer, McCutcheon Architecture, 1516 Cummings Street. So yeah, this, this is an exciting one, like, like was said previously. This, a lot of times when I go into a building, we have to convince people, you have to squint to see it. This one is pretty easy to see when you walk in. It's going to be special. So excited to be a part of it. Thanks, Bridget. That was a great summary of the site plan. And so just wanted to go over a few basics, Lee. You know, this is a unique project in that we're able to add square footage inside these existing buildings. So a lot of what you see is, you know, we're going to have 170,000 total square feet. 108,000 square feet of that will be inside of this existing building, with 35,000 of that being added floors within the building. So really, it's a matter of taking this, what was once industry and has been significant in the history of Omaha, and turning it into an innovation campus. So our theme is industry to innovation. And so the idea is, you do see these spaces that, you know, there'll be interaction for creative business growth while celebrating that old building that we're in and, and giving everybody the chance to see what it once was. while celebrating that old building that we're in and giving everybody the chance to see what it once was. I have other details that we can share. If there's any questions, we can bring it up. Just wanted to share some of these images. It will include a market hall and event center. So there's a public-private interaction portion of this that we really like. So primarily private office spaces that are somewhat accessible to the public, but it also includes a portion that will be public interaction that is in a 5,000-square-foot event center, as well as a 12,000-square-foot market hall. So that said, I have other renderings I could share, but it really is interesting how it's come together. Combination of new construction and old construction to keep the industrial feel, but really bring something that's state-of-the-art and sustainable to Omaha.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Matt Dwyer, Greenslate Development, 3814 Farnham Street. Don't have much to say other than thanks for the backup and appreciate the time and here to answer any questions if need be.
Other proponents on number 25? Seeing none, any opponents? I like seeing that courtesy in the new year. Come on down.
Luis Humanares, 2709 Dewey Avenue.
In the meantime, Luis squeezed you out.
I just want to reiterate my comments from the previous project. I don't think that the city council should be making financial decisions for other public bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I drive that area an awful lot. And with all the peaches and cream, which sounds good, I would say that this looks like a place that is probably blighted. My neighborhood is not, but you're getting awful close to my neighborhood, if not already in it. I'd like to read you something first, though, in regards to a bill that Senator Flood and Lincoln. And he describes TIF this way. And why I'm against TIF in general is because there is not enough two-way discussion and explanation. You can't expect all the citizens to understand everything on your website. You need to explain some of this. When you deny what I say, you need to prove to me why I'm wrong. But let me read this. "When TIF might seem complicated, the mechanics are easy to understand." Flood said that basically developers' infrastructure improvements are subsidized with property tax dollars. Municipalities, school districts, counties, community colleges, ag societies, et cetera, et cetera, give up that revenue for 15 years, but going on 20 or 25 now, if they get their way, while other taxpayers pick up the bill to make up the revenue that those people lose. Now, I want to add to that, that I've noticed the deterioration of buildings along Dodge Street and just a little way south of Dodge Street, from Saddle Creek going towards 50th now. And it won't be long before you're grabbing for all of the nice little houses on Farnham Street. Because they're moving out, they can't afford the higher property taxes, but they're going to have to cough up for this. I probably will have to cough up for that. And you guys deny that. But the common sense and logic of this is, when you give a developer, and some of these people are here multiple times for the last few years, you give them a tax break. Did they buy the property at that value of that day? And then they get 20 years at that rate? And then they pay it back with what? By that time, the homeowner's property taxes have paid for it. It's not his lower property taxes that pay for it. That doesn't figure. That's not common sense. The lower property taxes don't pay for it. Well, in 15 and 20 years, just like Conagra, et cetera, oh, they're out of town. Who pay for it then? Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd Street, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I like some of the programs Miss Bridgette Hadley has at Omaha Planning Department, but I'd like for you folks to oppose some of these programs, because, for instance, when I was down in Cairo, Egypt, sitting in that hotel, or the Sheraton, the room cost $2,000 a night. And when I was at the Waldorf Astoria in New York, sitting in that room, the room cost $2,000 a night. These are the programs that they sent me through under this governing body of this city. Senator, Governor Thon, Senator Zirinsky, Senator Hal, Congressman Haldon, Lee Terry Alden guys, Kavanaugh. I'm going to school up there, but we can't get any of our proposals come to this council at any time about some of the problems that they insisted I go out and study as a young man, and I come back and tell you what they wanted me to do the research on, and we can't get nothing done. And we see young Caucasian going to Mr. Doug Rowe community, setting up shop shops, selling. That's the first time I've seen white folks selling in a long time. They got a shop shop over in his district, this guy. I've come to your district over there, and a bunch of crooks over there. I'd never known that. I lived in Pacific High for 10 years. My wife wanted to move up to 192nd.
So sir, can I encourage you to focus your remarks on the item, which is the TIF project?
The item is this here. You, Mr. Patterson, I've been studying your district also. The Congress authorized me to go snooping around in everybody's business, and that's what I do. And I walk around the community, snooping in all you folks' district, nosy body, and knowing where the taxpayer's money is going. Your district doing well. He got thieves in his district, and we got killers in our district. Can you start setting some programs up for us, sir? Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents to number 25? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Couple of questions, whoever wants to answer, Brad or Eric.
I'll try.
Okay. Just rehashing, there was a lot of information given out there. How long has that property been vacated?
Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. When we say vacant, or just not used?
Nobody working there, no steel jobs like it was back in the day?
So the smelter closed, I think, 10-plus years ago. It was used as a woodworking shop for maybe 10 years, so.
Okay, so by way of history, back, you know, a few decades ago and progressing from there, it was a steel plant.
That's right.
And those were great union jobs, right in the middle of the city. And it's been vacant for whatever you said, multiple years.
In fact, those jobs went to Wahoo. So that whole steel working business relocated out of Omaha.
Right. So now, what this project has proposed before us today, if I heard you correctly in my reading of it the last couple of days, 670 jobs, correct?
That's correct.
And those are, it's a dignity work of janitorial, blue-collar jobs on the bottom to white-collar research jobs on the top, and pretty much everything in between that.
I was just going to say, you're covering the spectrum of jobs, 670 of them.
And also, in the material we had, there's whatever, 44 pages that talks about, you know, the elements of the master plan for, did there be a bike trail there eventually to kind of connect to this, correct?
That's correct. One of the things that, and it's important, especially since TOD is a new zoning designation here in our city, but everything about this project is in place to implement the standards and the master planning goals of the TOD, including pedestrian movement via non-vehicular or the use of mass transit.
And how will this fit in? I know there's certainly talk about Project Next and other things on the Med Center property. Can you explain briefly how this fits into that in the grand scheme of the long-term planning of the Med Center?
Yeah, and I got to be careful not to talk on behalf of the Med Center too much. But this is all part of their master plan. So when we look at, you know, this overall master plan and what's being proposed, this was their vision. This is just certainly their first aspect of the entire redevelopment of the UNMC campus, which will eventually incorporate Project Next.
Okay, and you mentioned, or one of you, I couldn't keep track of all you, but you mentioned the shell of that original building, you're going to build off of that, right? You're going to keep and preserve as much of it as you can. So if there's an old Omaha Steel worker out there that worked here, whose grandpa or dad did, when this thing's built, they'll be able to feel that spirit of the original building that it was. Is that fair to say?
Eric Westman, Alley Pointer, 1516 Cummings Street. Yeah, we're, there are very few pieces of this building that we're taking down. The building shell itself has been, over time, covered up for security reasons. There've been metal panels put over old windows. Some of the old one has been taken out. Where possible and where it works relative to interior space and energy code, we're keeping some of the old steel frame windows, so those are there. But the idea of that interior is really... So this is the overall project that you see here, and this is from the north side. So what you see here are new building and a new facade with the old full shell of a building behind it. And then down the side, again, it is designed to continue looking, you know, like that industrial plant, keeping some of the openings, doing additions. And then interior space. Interior space, the idea is really to draw your attention to the existing structure that we are utilizing. There's crane structures inside that'll still be in place. There'll be a crane parked within a three-story volume of the space. So really, the intent is to keep that history of what this was with industry, even though it is being transitioned to the new industry of the Med Center, which is innovation.
And those are great pictures that you're showing there. When I got on the council with two of my colleagues, my left and right, we, all, fair to say, we got overloaded with a lot of things that came at us. This was one of the first projects that I was shown, and I understand it well, because I lived very close by this and I have my whole life. And seeing just the pictures and the transformation, not only in the future, but of this project now, and again, jobs, 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 that'll be there, 670, I'm sure that'll grow. But also the construction jobs, and the workers are going to be building this thing. They're going to be in my district and in the midtown area to go eat. Hopefully, maybe grab a beer after work and relax a little bit. But this project is impressive, and I know a lot of work's been done prior to me being on the council. And I'm glad to support this going forward because of the great explosion of what's going to happen at the Med Center and starting with this project here. And again, if I didn't say the jobs that come with it, from the blue collar to the white collar and everything in between, I think it's just a tremendous project I look forward to supporting. So thanks for everything you're showing us here today. Thank you. And I make a motion to support this, Mr. President.
Motion second, no further lights. Roll call. Public hearing is closed, sir. Roll call, please.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, seven to zero. Item 26, to consider a Class C liquor license for Blue Sky Bar and Patio located at 10730 Pacific Street, Suite 10.
Public hearing and vote on number 26 is today. Proponents, please. I think we have Mr. Kelly by Zoom, yes. Get you off here in a second. Okay, you should be okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Hearing today on behalf of the applicant, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents today on number 26? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 27, to consider a Class C liquor license for Deviled A Company located at 18111 Q Street, Suite 102. A's communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 27 is today. I think we have our applicants by Zoom as well.
Yes, hi. Hello, Mr. President.
Name and address, just for the record, and then...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Rachel Vian, 18111 Q Street, Suite 102.
Zach Benbuskirk, 18111 Q Street, Suite 102.
Thank you. I'm just here to answer questions, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 27 today?
No, sir.
Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Motion second, roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 27 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 28, to consider a Class I liquor license for Star Indian Cuisine located at 2429 South 132nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 28 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. They are not on. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today on this item? Seeing none, any opponents? We're speaking to a liquor license, right, for number 28?
Correct, sir. You want me to give my name? And I hear this?
Sure.
Because it changes every time I come down here. In the meantime, Donnie R. Johnson, 4928 North 52nd, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I'm thinking, since I was guys here with earlier, on this liquor, they're going to need the space for all the liquor they're drinking to replace the liver's failure. But we're trying to get jobs and stop all the crime in North Omaha. But it's okay to let people drink so they can have liver failure, because they're going to need all that new room at their medical center that you're giving them money for. Because I don't think you get a liver transplant, can you? Because that's where liver come, drinking. That's none of my business.
Thank you.
I just want to get some stuff in North Omaha straightened out so we can get on the right track. There was a shooting the other night. Every time we look around, there's a shooting.
All right, thank you. Council members, there's time on the application, if we want to lay it over, since the applicant was not here. Motion second to lay over? Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 29, to consider a Class I liquor license for Urban Air Trampoline Park located at 15364 Weir Street. A's communication in support.
Public hearing and vote on number 29 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there. John Latka, 409 South 17th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I am legal counsel for Urban Air, here to answer any questions. I'm also here with Nicole, who's the owner and operator of Urban Air.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents on number 29? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 29 is approved, seven to zero. Item 30, to consider a Class D liquor license for The Rack Wine and Spirits located at 1119 North 204th Avenue.
Public hearing and vote on number 30 is today. Proponents, please.
Hello, and thank you. My name's Paul Dawkins, 13821 South 49th Street, 68133. Owner, operator of The Rack Wine and Spirits, and answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed? Roll call.
Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 30 is approved, seven to zero. Item 31, to consider a Class D liquor license for Walker's Convenience Mart located at 3932 North 16th Street. A's communication in opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number 31 is today. I believe we have the applicant by Zoom. There you go. Name and address for the record?
Can you hear me?
Got you now, yep.
Ramar Walker, 5715 North 30th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the interests of Walker's Convenience Mart located at 3932 North 16th Street. Here to answer any questions?
Great, thank you. Any other proponents on number 31? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Goodwin Jr., 4111 North 18th Street. I was born and raised in the community in which Mr. Walker is establishing this store. I gave him a call last week because of my concerns about having another liquor store in our community. Mr. Walker assured me that he wasn't looking to simply have a liquor store, but a convenience store in which had the option to sell alcohol. I believe that Mr. Walker has the intent to manage the facility, his business, and so my confidence is in that, but that's my hope. I'm here, and I would desire that the success of the businesses in North Omaha would be ones that manage the environment and what goes on in and around their property. I'm here, and I would desire that the success of the businesses in North, in North Omaha would be ones that manage the environment and what goes on in and around their properties. And I believe Mr. Walker is a man of integrity and of his word, and so that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon, council, Levanya Goodwin, forty-one eleven North Eighteenth Street. Here just to ask Mr. Walker and echoing my husband, to approach this store with caution. Living right around the corner from it, doing routine walks and cleanups, liquor is definitely a problem in our community. And so I think anytime a store is selling it, you know, especially a smaller store that has the opportunity to become a negative space. But I believe that with the conversations we've had with Mr. Walker, that he will, you know, keep those concerns at the forefront. Interesting enough, I had a comment, a conversation with a community leader just yesterday, and they said thirtieth, the, the Walgreens on thirtieth and Lake, it's the only Walgreens in the city that does not sell liquor. And I think it's because they recognize the challenge that it can be in a community where substance abuse is a problem. And so I'm just asking that not only the council, but that Mr. Walker approach this opportunity with utmost caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Hi, um, these questions are for Mr. Walker. Uh, Mr. Walker, um, have you reached out to the neighborhood there in the area?
I think you're on mute still, we'll get you off here in a second. There you go.
Can you?
Yep, got you now.
Yes, no, not directly, but I do know some individuals in the communities that I've had communication with. Um, I'm always open for any lines of communication or discussions, um, like we did speak, like Mr. Goodwin, appreciate his, him and the family's show of support. Um, but I did have a conversation with him as well. So, and I've been there for the last four years at that same location, operating as a recording studio. So I am absolutely one hundred percent all on board with all the concerns. And I'm always open for communication or any types of, any type of dialogue at any point.
All right, um, are, have you been in communication with the church nearby?
No, but I do know Reverend McCrul personally, and my hours of operation are going to definitely be in consideration of his church. Uh, so we will have later our operation hours as far as when we would even open, even on Sundays, but my operation, my hours of operation are going to be limited anyway. You know, that has everything to do with community concerns. For example, I will not be open beyond eight P M. during the week, during the fall and the stuff, excuse me, during the, uh, during the fall and winter time. The weekend during the spring and the summer possibly nine P M. But other than that, my predominant hours are going to be say between eight A M. and eight P M. So I'm going to have limited hours as well.
Okay, so would you say that, um, being a good neighbor, um, that these two things, um, reaching out to the neighbors and reaching out to the church is something that should have been a part of your best practice, being a businessman?
Well, you know, I, I haven't done so in regards to this endeavor, but when I purchased my building over four years ago, that was a part of that, you know? And I definitely like to consider myself, uh, having been a very good, uh, neighbor, you know, if you want to say that. I have had zero problems in my location, you know, and I respectfully say that, you know, as a part of my conversation that I had with Mr. Goodwin, you know, I, it was just a personal testament to, to what I do. You know, because with all due respects, I, 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 I have deep concern for my community. But like I expressed to him, um, my concern, uh, well, for most people, let's just say this respectfully, for lots of people in the community, that's pretty much where it stops at. It stops at concern. And for me, first and foremost, I'm a probation parole officer, I've been doing it for over twenty-seven years. Um, I live in North Omaha, the area that, uh, my current building that I'm trying to convert this to, which is strictly for the purpose of trying to create generational wealth. Uh, my grandmother purchased a home in that neighborhood, a block from that store, and we still own that home, and that was forty-eight years ago. So I'm a deep member of that community in that area. But, you know, I, I respectfully told Mr. Goodwin that, you know, the, the people that, um, those in our community share the most concern for are actually the people that I deal with the most. You know, it's those people that have supported me the most, and I have a relationship with, with those individuals, a lot of these people in the community. And I, I just, on a personal note, the last thing that I would ever do would be something that was detrimental to my community. So in regards to, once again, the previous conversations, yes, I've had those, and I've had them for a long time, but I haven't had any issue, excuse me, any issues whatsoever. You know, with running and operating a recording studio, um, at that current location.
Okay, and so have you been hearing the, some of the concerns that the community has had in, um, in that area regarding transparency? Being a part of, of the conversation with things like this, such as an alcohol venture? I just, I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that that conversation didn't take place.
Right.
Um, we did get a couple oppositions to your, uh, business venture. And one of the neighborhood presidents whom you didn't bother to seek or even get in contact with, Ms. Sexton, is not able to be here today, so she sent a representative to speak on her behalf because she did have funeral services that she needed to attend to. So at this time, I would like for Cheryl Weston to come up and share those concerns about what the neighborhood president.
Sorry to interrupt you. If I could just make one statement, you know, if I would have, if I would have, with me, this is a new experience for me. So if there would have been any individuals, people or whatnot, I mean, I would have one hundred percent approached anyone with, to have any level of discussion. And I'm appreciative, appreciative of the process personally. You know, I have no, I have no negative thoughts, feelings, or anything associated with anyone who expressed any concern. Because I would just say again on a personal note, the concerns that they expressed, the people that we're talking about are the people I deal with every single day. Every day, that's who I deal with, you know, and so for me, it's beyond concern. I'm hands-on with the people in the community, and I'm talking about the who's who of the community that have been problematic. And I won't sit here and take any level of credit that in twenty years of operating a recording studio, you know, dealing with some of these people that I haven't had any problems whatsoever. I won't take credit for that, it's many blessings to God, but I know that there's been operational things that I've done that have also, you know, played a role in me not having any problems. And so, you know, that's the only thing that I can say once again, if, if, with me never having been through this process before, even when I purchased the building to turn it into a recording studio. I've never been through this process before, wouldn't even know who some of these individuals are to, to have contacted them to do so. But I can tell you this, I'm willing, I would have been more than willing and still will be willing to have any level of conversation with anybody that wants to talk to me that would then understand, you know, what is important to me. First of all, as a person, you know, and as a, as a person that lives in that community still to this day, you know, um. So I'm, I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions or address any concerns that anyone would have, have for me.
Uh, Mr. Walker, as a community, we're a little bit concerned about liquor license being issued in a community, and the neighbors have not had any conversations with you. This is not personal, this is just.
No, no, I'm, excuse me, I would never take it that way, so I absolutely don't have a problem with that at all.
All right, and, and so my concern is that the neighborhood and as far as where that information is, as to who to contact, as far as neighborhood associations are concerned. The, um, city planning department has done an outstanding job with providing a list of all the neighborhood associations, along with who those presidents are, along with their phone numbers and the boundaries in which they are representing. I apologize that you were not aware of who that might be, but as you pointed out, you have or do have some knowledge regarding the church. And I, I believe that some conversation is needed there because, um, there will be an adverse impact of some kind there at your facility or at your shop, because that's just the nature of the course. And again, Ms. Sexton is the president of this neighborhood association called Laird nearby you. And she's not able to attend today because she had funeral services, so she asked, she contacted me, and she asked that Ms. Weston speak on her behalf because she did have a loss in her family, and she's attending that funeral service as we speak. So at this time, I'd like for her to share those concerns that Ms. Sexton and the neighborhood is having regarding this. Is, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl Weston, one eight one one Immett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And as Ms. Johnson stated, Ms. Sexton, um, is attending a funeral of the two little boys that unfortunately passed away in the fire a few weeks ago. And so she contacted me and, and I contacted her back, and she asked, um, there is a letter in your packet. And she asked that you look at those reasons respectfully why she wanted to, the association would like to have this denied. And it begins, because we're working so hard in that area, and I live approximately six blocks from there, so I know the area real well. Used to live four blocks south of this particular location. And the neighborhood association, if you look at number one, said that they've been working really hard to improve the area with King's Science Center and the churches. And Habitat of Humanity has built some houses there, and now it's a more diverse neighborhood. Also the church. And one of the items that she really wanted you to watch or check and read was number three and number four, because this structure had been a home for after-hours activity, private-type club gatherings, bring-your-own-bottle environment. The parties have loud music, especially on Fridays and Saturdays, the doors left open, um, spills out onto the parking lot. There's just a few parking spots on the north side of that building, and then otherwise they have to go up the street. Many of the neighborhoods, neighbors have had their driveway blocked from people attending that. The church has had to go out on Sunday morning and clean up all the drinking, the trash and so forth. There's been fights, gunshots, and other problems. So she'd like you to look at that number four and see, this is not what this area needs. Also on number five, she stated that, and as Ms. Goodwin had just previously stated, we have enough liquor stores in our area, in our community. And I know you're saying this is going to be a convenience store, and you're going to buy it, and you're supposed to leave. We want to be honest. And I think all seven of you, I have great respect for you and told you, and I think you know what's going on here and the adults, um, this is not what's going to happen. There's going to be problems, it's going to be more problems, and there's no reason to have another store to sell liquor, whether it's by the bottle or whether by the drink or whatever, when we have one, Three Miles, Sixteenth and Locust, two more establishments on Twentieth and Locust, several north on Ames Street. So why do we need to have another one? And talks about convenience, those items, almost every one of those liquor stores are stores that sell liquor by the bottle or package, whatever you want. Their number one revenue from, is one, from liquor, two, is from cigarettes, and then you get any of those other small items, such as maybe bread, milk, or something like that convenience. This is not what we need in the neighborhood. And so we're asking, and since I'm not partic, right in Laird Neighborhood Association, but I live within the area, this should be denied. Also, you should have had in your packets a letter from the church. So this gentleman says he does, he knows the church. They also said that they do not want to have, this is a convenience store that's going to have liquor, to sell it, no matter which way you want to say, by, whether it's by the bottle or the glass. We're asking, we're trying to do what people keep saying that the neighborhoods in North Omaha are about. Well, we're trying to change that image, and we don't need more liquor establishments in order to improve that. And we're asking for you to deny this. And when he talks about in your packet, you'll say that there's, um, the entrance and the hours he'll be open. I'm like, I'm asking you, use your good judgment, use your thinking. You think that this gentleman is having, already having, um, social club activities where there's not supposed to be any liquor, but because it's considered a social or they rented it out for services, it's not a studio, they're taking, they're already having problems, and they're having this? Now you're going to have a convenience store that has one entrance going forward in the front, and people are going to come in and go, oh, I'm going in here to the convenience store. And it closes, he said it's going to be open, it closes at eight, so they're going to go in there, and then they, is that door going to be locked that they can't go downstairs? Ask yourself those questions. You're all, as I said, very intelligent professional people. We know what this game is, again, on behalf of the Laird Association, myself and other community neighbors within that area, please deny this application. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Walker, did you have anything that you wanted to say? Can't hear you.
He'll be off and good here just in a second. There you go.
Yes, uh, no, I, I, I listened to all their concerns and, you know, um, the only thing that I can just editorially say is that some of those questions and concerns are absolutely one hundred percent totally against what I stand for and what my family stands for. I know she mentioned some of the other, uh, things that have occurred in the area that have never been associated directly with my recording studio at all. You know, in fact, um, I, I don't call it a lost of money, but I actually turned down events regularly because I would not do events past two or three o'clock in the morning, I would not do them. I've actually come into that place and made everyone leave, so a lot of those issues, uh, I, like I said, I've shared those same concerns, but it's just not how I operate, not what I do, it's not how the business was going to be conducted at all. So I really can't offer anything other than that. I do want to emphasize that this is going to be a convenient mark. I will have coffee, I will have fountain stations, I will have a slussy station. So I'm not a convenient mark, excuse me, a liquor store that's posing as a convenient mark. It's the other way around, where alcohol would represent a limited aspect of what I was doing, just having it as availability, you know, in conjunction with the location, uh, me being close, so close to Carter Lake. But I, I, I do want to say this, though, you know, regardless of this liquor license application, um, I will do something that's going to create some generational wealth for my family. That building is going to be a convenient mark, um, with or without alcohol, I respectfully say. I, I, I wish certain other people in the community, for whatever reason, would have some discussions with me because I would like to believe that in the four years that I operated as a recording studio, that I have been a great customer, a neighbor. You know, I regularly have done things, uh, cleaning up the neighborhood, I clean my, 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 uh, my property clean. I've never had any police calls to my building associated with anything. Check the records yourself. I've never had a police. Check the records yourself. I've never had a police call to my, to my establishment, ever. And that includes 15 years of having a recording studio at my home and in the last four years in that place. And I would reiterate the concern that I have for the who's who of the people that have caused havoc. I have a different relationship with them. I was asked, do I, do I try to, what way do I have a relationship? Or how do I try to impact or have an impact with these young people or some of these individuals? And it's just by being an example. You know, I'm a probation parole officer still, you know, I value that. And more importantly and most importantly for me, you know, I love the people in my community, including every single person that has walked up to that podium to express any level of concern. The outcome would be great, but I want those people to understand this personally. Irregardless of how this outcome happens, I want those people in that place to know that the very people that are, that most people in our community are scared of, that cause the most problems, those are the people that I deal with the most. And I have a genuine love for those people, for those young people. And I would say it again, the last thing that I would ever do is something detrimental to my community. And I would once again state that I like to believe that in my four years of operating a recording studio with the who's who of causing problems in our community, I would like to believe that first and foremost, God has chosen to shield and bless me because of my character and how I conduct business, but I've never had a problem ever in my place. So I'm still here to answer your question.
Mr. Walker, after hearing the comments that were made about, from the neighborhood and the church, do you think that, had you visited with them prior to this, liquor license could have hedged against all of these concerns? Could you have, you know, do you think your outcome would have been different?
I, I really can't say that they would have, but I, once again, I, I have to say that I'm dumb to the process. So excuse my ignorance to the process, I really am. Because I, I knew for certain that there would be some form of discussion or opposition. I'm just saying I'm, I'm really dumb to the process with all due respect, because I've never witnessed this before. But yes, would I have engaged in that kind of conversation? Absolutely. Would I still? Absolutely. But do I believe that it would have changed any perspective? The answer to that question is no, because I would say this, in regards to what I do for a living, I have to say that the problem's not a liquor store. That's not the problem. You know, it's a lot of other issues within family structures. It's a lot of other problems that then lead to that. It's not the other way around. I just say that editorially and respectfully. So, so I, I say that for the reason of saying, do I believe that conversations would have made them feel more comfortable about what I'm trying to do? Maybe not. Maybe it would have made them feel more comfortable about what I am as a person and what my family stands for and what's important to me. But that doesn't mean anything regarding the perception or, or the reality of the concerns in our community. Because I, I even said to some other, a person that talked to me, asked me, was I concerned? I'm like, no, I'm not concerned. Because like I said earlier, for most people, it stops there. I deal with the people. So, you know, and I, I say once again, it's not the alcohol that's a problem in our community. It's a lot of other stuff. And I say that from a person working from the inside as a probation parole officer. And I've been doing it for a very long time, you know, and so there you have it.
So first, I would like to thank you for your contribution in stimulating economic growth in Omaha. This liquor license is being challenged by neighbors and nearby church. And so I would like for us to engage in that conversation with the nearby neighbors who will be directly impacted by the alcohol being sold at your locations, sir. I disagree with you in regards to, maybe the neighbors will have a different, they won't have any, they won't say anything or do anything different. They're going to be negative. I, I have the school of thought, thinking that once we talk to people and we negotiate and we discuss our differences, that we typically work things out together collectively as a team. I think North Omaha needs to start doing things like that in order for us to work cohesively together.
If I could, sorry, if I could, I, I definitely don't want that to be taken as if I, I believe that they, they have a negative perspective or perception that would not change. I, I don't want that because, you know, I, I don't want to go into myself and Mr. Goodwin's conversation. You know, because one of the things that I really expressed to him was how important it is for the people that have wrote any letters, let alone appeared in person, I want them to understand how, how appreciative I am that they're even involved or express concern. And that when I say that I love and care about those people, even the ones, you know, the ones that are in opposition, that is genuine, that I mean that. So that was most important to me, to him, as far as in my conversation. Because, you know, they don't know what I do. They, you know, they don't know who I do. They don't know what I stand for. And I'm just one of many others in my community that really care about people. But I'm not on social media about it. I could care less about a news story, an article. It doesn't matter to me. And if I'm one of those people that have historically done what I do from the back, I'm, I'm good with that. And I've always been good with that. And so, you know, my conversation was very editorial with him. Because, see, I don't want to, I could go down a list of people and it's not a good one. The people that I've dealt with personally, you know. And I, I say these things because of the positive impact that I try to have on these. I sit around and have conversations with these young men about LLCs, filing taxes, about their family. This is what I, this is what, all the time. So when Mr. Goodwin called me, I was so appreciative because like I told him, I'm glad his people's concerned, you know, and I, I don't have a problem with, with any of them. But all I could do for him was just tell him what I do, you know. And he was, he was one of those individuals that was in opposition. But I guess if you understand my character and what I'm really about, you know, those things that were mentioned, I'm surprised by those things.
Right. So I would like, I would like, I would like for your business to be successful. In order for it to be successful, it, we kind of need to do things. It's not about what we do, it's the how, the how we do it. I mean, we can, we can do whatever we want as human beings, but the how really does matter. And this, and this community needs to be able to have a conversation with you before we move forward so that they can have some of their concerns and their minds put at ease.
And I, I'm totally with anything, I'm totally.
So at this time, I would like that we, I move that this is held over until January 25th, which will allow you to have that, those conversations that you somehow overlooked and, and have those kind of conversations and see if we can come up with something where everybody's happy and we're working collectively as a team.
Right. And I, I want to be clear too is, I, I don't want the lack of communication to be taken in a way that was not conducive to the process. I figured this day would come, but, you know, with, how do, I mean, I have no means of, other than Mr. Goodwin, I have no means of knowing who, what, when, where, why, as far as anybody in opposition, who would I talk to to even have an opportunity to express, you know, what I stand for? Because if, if I would have known that, that's what I would have done a long time ago. But I would also respectfully say within this process, this is a very minor thing to me. Because although I'm moving forward with that and I'm open for the, the conversation, I'm still going to move forward with trying to do this. This is better than me. You know, I, I have a list of young people that, that want to work. So, you know, the.
So I, I made a, I made a move to hold this over. Is there someone? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, it's due back to Lincoln on January 31st.
Okay, there's no further lights. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one. Item 32, to consider a Class D liquor license for Omega Saver located at 9516 Calhoun Road.
Public hearing and vote on number 32 is today. Proponents, please. Do we have the applicant here? Doesn't seem that we do. I'll call for opponents. I'm not going to close the public hearing. I suspect we'll want to continue this one too if we have time.
We do.
There is time. Is there a motion? Until the 25th?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 33, to consider a liquor license addition application for Lakeside Village located at 17475 Francis Street to add an outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 33 is today. Proponents, please.
John Sigman, 1044 North 115th Street, Suite 500, Omaha, Nebraska, 68154. Associate Corporate Legal Counsel for Emanuel, here to answer, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Want to restate that motion? With the waiver of Rule 7? Thank you. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 34 and 35 are held on December 21st. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Item number 53 has been removed from the consent agenda. So first we'll handle items 36 through 52. The public hearings on agenda items number 36 through 52 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief Michelle Bang with the Omaha Police Department, 505 South 15th Street. I'm here as a proponent for item number 38, which is to replace the garage doors at Central Police Station. And item number 51, which is grant funding, I apologize, which is funding for the detox center at Douglas County Community Mental Health.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on items 36 through 52? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Is there a motion? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearing and vote on number 53 is today. First we'll start with proponents. I think we have Mr. Noddle by Zoom. And Troy, if you'd like to go first, that's fine.
Mr. President, members of the council, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office, 1819 Forenam Street, Suite 300. Standing before you today, requesting approval of the Owners' Rep Agreement. Spend just a few minutes just providing a little bit of history of how we've arrived where we are today. You'll recall back in 2010 and again in 2017, there was a facilities master plan and update to the Omaha Public Library facilities. In that plan and update, it was noted that W. Del Clark Library be replaced and establish a new downtown library, as well as relocate central distribution to a more centrally located facility in Omaha. W. Del Clark was described as dated, inefficient, underutilized, said the building design makes it costly to operate, and that replacement of the main library should be seriously considered. So leading up to November 23rd, we had negotiated two letters of intent, one for a facility at 1401 Jones Street downtown that would, house would be the future site of the downtown library location. The facilities master plan suggested a 30,000 square foot facility. That building is actually about 42,000 square feet. We would lease roughly two-thirds of that building, 30,000 square feet of that building. The other facility, 3020 South 84th Street, is a former shop co. It consists of about 90,000 square feet, and that would be the future location of central distribution administration, as well as other resource and collections, such as perhaps genealogy or otherwise. So with that being said, on November 23rd, those letters of intent that the mayor had signed were announced, and so we now begin the process of what that looks like to actually physically relocate the libraries. In December, we solicited proposals for what we'll call an Owners' Rep or Project Manager. Early on in the process, we, we realized that, that the city and the library in particular did not have the, the expertise and the bandwidth, so to speak, to really oversee this. Library department needs to continue to focus on providing library services. Other city staff needs to continue to focus on providing other city services. So we solicited proposals for that Owners' Rep. That proposal requested, it's, it's a four-part process. The first part is engagement. I'm going to actually read an excerpt from that request for proposal. Reads that the representative will be responsible for the following. Number one, engaging the Omaha Public Library Board of Trustees, Omaha Public Library Administration, and other key stakeholders in the evaluation of the existing W. Del Clark Main Library collections, references, resources, services, fixtures, furniture, and equipment, and developing a subsequent relocation redistribution strategy and implementation plan. Said plan shall include a delivery timeline identifying opening and closing dates of specific libraries, along with access to specific library services, and any anticipated interruptions to said service. The other aspects of this agreement include soliciting and obtaining a design team to, to oversee the design of the two tenant improvements. Both facilities, the, what we'll call the core and shell, are being delivered by the property owner and the building owner. It'll be the tenant's responsibility to deliver tenant improvements associated with library operations and services. So there'll be a design team that'll need to be secured in order to prepare those construction documents for the tenant improvements. The Owners' Rep will also be responsible for obtaining, acquiring a construction team to carry out those tenant improvements. And then lastly, obtaining and securing a relocation company to provide relocation services to physically move those resources, collections, et cetera, to the two new facilities. There is a schedule that has been provided, that's scheduled. That schedule is about a nine-month window to relocate the Dale Clark Library to coincide with the tenant improvements, as well as to coincide with the core and shell improvements, particularly at fourteen oh one Jones. So with that being said, we are putting forward to you all today this request for approval of an agreement for an owner's rep. It's just the agreement for the owner's rep. We know and understand that those proposals for design services will need to come back to City Council, that the proposals for construction and relocate will all need to come back to City Council. This is just onboarding the owner's rep so that the owner's rep can begin engaging those community stakeholders to start preparing the strategy and the plan to satisfy the deliverables that we've identified. With that being said, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have a representative of the respondent online to also answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Noddle, you're recognized if I'll get you off mute here in a second. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Gotcha.
Mr. President, members of the council, city staff, I'm Jay Noddle with Noddle Companies, twenty-two eighty-five South Sixty-seventh Street in Exarban Village. I'm pleased to be here today. I guess I want you all to know that the reason that we were interested in assisting the city and the library as an owner's rep is because we understand the importance of this. We also understand the complexity of the tasks at hand and the limited amount of time available to do the work. These kinds of assignments and tasks are commonplace for our organization, and we feel that it's a good fit for us, a good fit for the city and the library and the community. So we're certainly up to the task, understand the importance of all of this, and the need for certainty of execution. We certainly believe we bring that to the table, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. This seems awful silly to me. It's a pretty nice library, and for three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I think we could do a lot with it. So it brings some questions to my mind. I think clear back to when we blew up a lot of wonderful buildings downtown that could be used for low-income housing or affordable housing, museums, schools. Now we want to get rid of a library, but for who? Who wants the property? This is some logical questions that might come up in a citizen's viewpoint of things. Isn't there somebody other than Noddle in this town? Can't we find some city employees or some unemployed citizens that can help do this moving of the library, if that's what it is? We seem to want to have money for spatial, new types of employees on equity and all this other stuff, and the county has similar types of things. But there's an awful lot of people unemployed that probably have these skills. And I don't think you've searched hard enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Troy, I had a couple of questions if I could, please. So you mentioned kind of the four kind of components or major components to this agreement. And I wanted, so included in that, though, this, the selected vendor, excuse me, would also be responsible for, I believe, you know, conducting the general contractor selection process, the architectural selection process, and some of those functions as well, too. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're going to be responsible for going out there and soliciting proposals for design, construction, and relocation services. Those contracts will then get brought back to the city with recommendation for lowest and best, much like we do for all other city services, professional service agreements, et cetera. Yes.
And I know it's been noted, too, along the timelines and the, actually, the, excuse me, the complexity of this assignment as well, too, because we're talking about, and it's not just moving some books from one location to another, it's, we're actually moving to two different, to two very different locations and different functions, and this is part, as I understand it, the process of what this vendor will be expected to do is to help make that map for kind of what goes where and when. And, I mean, we're talking about not just books, but archives, materials, collections. I believe there's still some of the Byram and Reed collection in the basement of W. Dale Clark. Those are some of the functions that will be performed within this contract. Is that right?
That's correct.
And we have a very short amount of time. I think the, it's a nine-month process at least on this, so time is the essence. Correct?
That's correct. That's the timeline that we've identified for a whole host of reasons. Again, particularly as it relates to, we want to try to be thoughtful to the service, the programs and services that the library offers, and trying to avoid any interruptions in that to the greatest degree that we can, number one. Number two, obviously, these are lease agreements for facilities, so, you know, at some point in time, how do you begin to occupy a space? Obviously, we're going to have to enter into those lease agreements. When do they start? When do they conclude? So rather than tying up facilities for unidentified period of time, we again have identified this schedule. We also believe that this schedule, there will be some efficiencies in the fact that the contractor, the owner and the contractor of fourteen oh one Jones will be renovating the core and shell. So we think that there's some efficiencies there in getting in there at a certain amount of time to finish out the tenant improvement, to try to deliver a turnkey facility of a downtown branch in a timely manner.
And then there was also a point brought up about, there was, there ended up, ended up only being one respondent to the RFP, but there were certainly more than one party that expressed a very high level of interest in the response. Is that correct?
That's correct. We actually, both myself and Kevin Anderson in our office, we had a number of conversations with a potential, with potential respondents. I'm actually surprised that we only got one proposal, but we did have a number of conversations with a variety from folks that were maybe just in the construction sector, or maybe folks that were just in the design sector, that were maybe thinking about trying to put together a team to prepare a proposal. But at the end of the day, we only got one. That one was then provided to a selection committee of the city. We received feedback and input from that selection committee and have subsequently made the recommendation before you today.
And I know a lot of times, especially like on a public works project, a lot of times we'll have an engineer's estimate before we get into it to know about what pricing we might expect, but that doesn't happen in this case. But I'm assuming from the selection committee's review and your review that the pricing for these services seem to be in line.
Yeah, we had some, we did have a period of due diligence that we exercised some of that research to find out exactly what it might cost to acquire the design team, acquire a construction team, what are perhaps some cost per square foot numbers that we might expect for tenant improvements, knowing and understanding the facilities that we were looking at, a level of complexity of what those tenant improvements might look like. So we had a, we feel like we have a pretty good idea of what those costs might look like, but until we onboard an owner's rep, go through engagement, actually get a design team onboard, will we fully see that come to fruition? But yeah, we do have a little bit of a, an idea of what this is going to cost us from owner's rep all the way through relocation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Anderson, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Got a couple of questions for you. I know why we're at this point, and to all those that attended community meetings, library meetings, it certainly seems like the, we're full steam ahead on moving the downtown library. Not a lot of transparency, at least through us as the council. The most information I got on any of this library moving was attending a meeting myself. So thankful that I got that information. I'm trying not to lump this with what we're going to see in a couple of weeks, which is the contract's already moving forward. I mean, we already have two locations. The downtown library's moving, so I'm going to try not to do that. I don't know that I necessarily agree with either one of them for numerous reasons, along with looking through the contract itself, but I also find myself stuck in a situation where I know with an urban core that needs to thrive, which we need in Omaha, we need a library that's downtown. Not just driving around today, but over the last couple of weeks, I haven't found a site personally, not that I'm a developer looking, but I can clearly see what we need that would fit. So the site that's already picked, no matter what the community engagement has been, this is pretty much a done deal based on the will of the council. It's kind of what we're stuck with. And it's unfortunate because driving by that site today, it's a piece of a, it's a dump. It's going to need a lot of work. Sorry, I almost slipped, but it's the truth. So I'm glad we got somebody to step up. Noddle Companies can do this. But the question is, what if, two weeks from now, based on what the council feels, what if we don't approve the two locations that we have on the agenda? What would it mean for this agreement?
So I'll maybe try to respond a little bit to some of your questions, comments. Backing up a little bit, knowing and understanding that these real estate negotiations don't happen overnight, right? I mean, these are, these are months, these are years in the making sometimes, and that in this particular instance, we don't move libraries a whole lot, right? I mean, that just generally just doesn't happen. So based on what was provided to the library board of trustees and to the city and the facilities master plan, coordinating, finding a downtown location with thirty thousand square feet and a central facility of approximately nine, at the same time, man, that's tough, right? And to be able to try to negotiate letters of intent and securing those properties, man, that's tough. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that we do, you're right, behind the scenes that we try to negotiate. For anybody who's in and around real estate, they'll understand kind of why some of those conversations, negotiations have to take place. But with that being said, we feel like we were super fortunate to come across both of these properties at the exact same time and have been able to get to this point where we are today in a short amount of time. The location of fourteen oh one Jones, as you have indicated, is maybe not the most sightly property today, but it is a really exciting opportunity. There's some historical significance to it. We have received support from members of the board of trustees. We've also received support from public library administration who have been in the building, have toured it, see the potential for what it could be. Some artistic renderings have been put out. We have great partners in both property owners who are anxious and willing to create something really exciting for the library and for the library system and for the city ultimately. So we feel like we're really fortunate that a lot of this came together when it did, because otherwise, much like you've indicated, finding thirty thousand square feet downtown is difficult, right? And when you're dealing with a library, oftentimes what you see is you either build new, right? Because it's new, it's architecturally available, it's modern, it's, I mean, you look at kind of some of the stuff going down at the riverfront with the luminaryum, et cetera, you either kind of go that direction, or you see a library go into a historic building with historical significance and historical architecture and otherwise. And so those are some limitations that you have in the real estate world downtown as well. So on the one hand, yeah, this is moving fast, and this is moving quickly. Had we waited and tried to do something different, it makes it exponentially more difficult to relocate library programs and sort of, do you move them once while something's being built? Do you wait two years while something's being built? And then what, how, so it becomes, like I said, exponentially more difficult. We feel as though this is the best recommendation, that the two facilities check all the boxes in the facilities master plan. Again, we garnered support from Omaha Public Board of Trustees, from OPL Administration, and so I would hope that that support will also weigh on your mind when you consider the lease agreements, but it'll be our recommendation that those lease agreements also satisfy the criteria set forth in that facilities master plan.
And certainly not discrediting the work that has been put into this, although be it not out in the public as much as it should have been up until very recently, today, the number one email I got from people concerned about things in the city was about the library. Obviously, today that changed. But you didn't answer the first question, though. What happens with the agenda items two weeks from now? What happens to this recommended agreement if those two items two weeks from now don't pass?
I would have to probably defer to our law department and the other party to the agreement. I can't speak for Jmail, they'll let J speak, but I would hope that both parties would be able to renegotiate the terms and conditions of that agreement should council not find those two facilities favorable, given, again, the support of the library board of trustees, which will meet on the twentieth, and will make a recommendation on those lease agreements on the twentieth. And then ultimately, that recommendation coming before you all. I'll maybe turn it over to the law department and the respondent to get their feedback.
Sure. Mr. Coosie?
Matt Coosie, Law Department, if there's no project for them to manage, then there is no need to have a contract with them.
Yep. Thank you, sir. And this is exactly why I asked this question about the timeline this morning at pre-council. It seems like sometimes, and again, I'm not discrediting what this company, especially since we know that it's the only bidder we got for making this happen, but the timeline just doesn't make sense to me. It's a project manager for two different facilities that we don't even, we haven't even voted on. And I understand we need to get things going. It seems like some of the things you mentioned maybe are already happening, or maybe have happened with the moving part. The engagement part unfortunately is probably over at this point, and that's probably the worst thing for people to hear, because people are still not sold on the fact that the library's moving. But the positives, again, I don't know where else we would have moved it. It's still in the urban core, although it's not very exciting. Hopefully, with the amount of money, depending on how the vote goes, maybe we could make it exciting. And I'm just going to stay positive for the time being. The drive-by today, I would have voted no for this, for the record, but driving by today and seeing how much work this site needs, we need somebody like Noddle there to spearhead this, to move this forward. Doesn't mean I'm going to vote yes on anything further. We'll see how that goes. But if you're listening, and I know you are, and people out there are listening, the timeline and this whole entire process was flawed. And the reason it was flawed is because not enough people were involved in the conversation. And those people are us who make the decisions on how this works. So we'll see how it moves going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley. You're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President.
President, a couple of just questions. That 14th and Jones, Vinnie's, Councilman Palermo's description was pretty spot-on on that facility there. If this goes forward, parking around that and the location specific to the orbit line and other things, just walk me through that, because I've gotten a lot of emails and talked to a lot of people on this, with folks that are handicapped, that the Clark Library is pretty accessible for them with those things I mentioned. How is that going to, that spot at 1401 Jones, how is that going to fit in with those things?
Sure. With regards to parking, we've remembered that at Dale Clark today, there is no parking, right? The parking that exists at Dale Clark today, down below, is primarily used for the purposes of administration. With administration being relocated to what I'll call Central City, 84th and Frederick, there won't be much of a need for parking now. There will be parking provided. As part of the corn shell, there's also on-street parking improvements. I think there's 12 to 15 on-street parking stalls that are being constructed on Jones Street and on 14th Street combined. So there will be almost front-door parking that's going to be available, more so than what's at Dale Clark Library today per se, as well as within three blocks, there is over 600 stalls in various parking lots that are available. So actually, 1401 Jones, with regards to parking, has much more parking available and many more options available for patrons, et cetera, to frequent the new 1401 Jones, which provides it a really exciting opportunity for access. That site is also up and coming. We've just seen the renovations to Jones Street, the brick overlay that took place to Jones Street. We're seeing some new investment in that particular area of the urban core. We think this is going to complement it well. We've also heard from some neighboring property owners that, you know, they were in opposition to things of, you know, night and weekend type of entertainment, et cetera. We found through our conversations that this would be actually a really good marriage of providing a use that the residents in the area would find desirable. With regards to accessibility, obviously, the site as the corn shell and the right-of-way improvements are constructed, they'll have to be ADA compliant, they'll have to be accessible and compliant to, in compliance with all city codes and ordinances regarding accessibility. So we think it'll be just as, if not better than the access at the existing facility.
Okay, and one of the, specific to the orbit line, this is further away from it, right?
Yeah, so this kind of goes-
I get that a lot. I mean, I don't mean to interrupt you, but those are, that really, I'm sure all of us up here got multiple emails on this and conversation with constituents. That's number one for me that really stood out in all the things that I've heard on this. And again, I know there's a lot of moving parts and the time crunch, but that's a big thing. Go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but that's a real big issue with this.
Yeah, so the orbit line, I mean, the orbit's great. I would love to identify a location along that transit corridor. You know, the city has gone through an exercise recently of implementing transit-oriented development along that corridor to encourage high-density, mixed-use, et cetera. This 1401 Jones, we understand, it's not on the orbit line. It is accessible, I think we looked it up one day, I think there are three or four bus routes that this is accessible to. So for those folks that don't drive, it would be available to travel along the Dodge Street corridor on orbit. They would unfortunately then have to transition to another bus line, but those bus lines do provide access to the new 1401 Jones Street. So for those folks that don't have an automobile, it may be an extra, and we understand that and we appreciate that. Unfortunately, there's just not a whole lot of other options, even if we wanted to, along the Dodge Street corridor or along that orbit line.
Last thing I'll say, I know to help people that rely on the orbit and those modes of transportation, it would be nice if there was some kind of vouchers that could be given to people to make that available. I know there's passes that have been given out to the zoo for people from different organizations. That would be a real strong thing that we could do, I think. Maybe that needs to be looked at, because to help people that rely on transportation to get to the library and if the location, the venues change, and that would be something that could certainly help.
I think it's a great idea, and I think it's something we should explore, for sure.
Thanks. Thank you. I would just insert at this point that I think we're starting to talk about is the leases themselves, right? That's not really this contract that's on the agenda for today. But for me, that is the problem, and I agree with Councilmember Vice President Palermo, that I for one want to see more information about the leases. The council has not been briefed on the leases. And so it does seem out of sequence to me to approve an item that is paying someone to determine how and when to move to those locations when the council hasn't approved those locations yet and in fact hasn't been briefed on those locations yet. And are receiving a lot of questions about genealogy centers and public transit and parking and all those things, in addition to the future of the library system itself. So for me, I would just indicate that I'd be much more comfortable if this was at a minimum matched up with the lease votes, which are anticipated to have a public hearing on the 25th and anticipated to have a vote on February 2nd, and probably wouldn't feel comfortable moving forward with this yet today. Mr. Rowe, did you want to speak with your lead? Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
I'm not sure if he can make a motion, but I would like to make a motion to lay over agenda item 53 until January 25th.
Hold second.
And continue the public hearing? Yes.
And continue the public hearing, sir.
Troy and/or Matt, I'm not sure, or if Mr. Nadel could be taken off mute, maybe he could answer as well, too. Is there a provision in the agreement for termination of the agreement if, for some reason, in two weeks, the leases aren't approved? I guess I'm asking, is there some language, accommodating language within the agreement that would contemplate a reason for an early termination if, for example, the leases weren't approved the 1st of February?
I'll refer to section, subsection 12, "The owner may terminate this agreement upon 30 days' written notice with or without cause." "If payment terms are not met or agreement is extended past the agreed-upon schedule, the owner's rep shall provide the owner with 30 days' notice of its intent to terminate the agreement in the event any termination. Owners' representatives shall be paid for all construction management services provided or reimbursable costs incurred up to the date of termination, plus reasonable demobilization costs." So in theory, if you were to approve it tonight and the owner's rep did begin engagement as early as tomorrow, any services rendered between then and a termination would have to be payable, but other than that. And again, to the point about the engagement, as much as we have talked to folks, you know, we have received a lot of questions, comments, concerns from board of trustees, from library staff, from the community, et cetera. And as much as we would like to have put our arms around it, this is why we believe the owner's rep, if they can onboard it and they can start tomorrow, they can start collating those comments, concerns, and otherwise, and we're exponentially further ahead in the schedule. Two weeks, two weeks is two weeks. Two weeks gives us a lot of time to engage all of those partners.
And obviously, any payments would have to be detailed, invoiced, and submitted for approval by the city to pay.
Yes.
So knowing that, is there, I'll just say it differently. Having that information now available as you consider your vote, because we have a motion in a second, I would suggest that that might be something to consider as we take this vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo. You're recognized.
Yeah, one more wrinkle. I would like to withdraw that motion based on, we do have the week off and the 25th is the second reading.
Of the leases, yeah.
Of the leases, so without objection, I like to withdraw that motion, but the new motion to be on our agenda for February 1st, which is actually three weeks, not two, to sync up with the vote on the two properties that will be asked to vote on.
I think that makes sense as well, given the observations we've had today. And I'm sure, Mr. Anderson, you would commit to some city council briefings before then?
Absolutely. We'll be more than happy to provide any answers, any questions you might have, for sure.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
I do have a question, Troy. How realistic is this timeline? If we delay three weeks, what does it do for our delivering on time?
I mean, three weeks is three weeks, right? I mean, that's-
And we're on, I mean, is it realistic to even get this done in nine months?
We do believe that this is realistic, that the timeline that was provided to, so understanding the big picture, right, we're less concerned about the 84th and Frederick Street property for all of those reasons. It's a great, big, huge white box, it's probably not going to take a whole lot of tenant improvements. So that timeline is much shorter. We feel as though we're going to be able to, which if you think about the Dale Clark Library as a whole, 90% of Dale Clark Library today are all of those collections, services, operations, programs, et cetera, between central distribution and administration and probably genealogy, and there's some governmental documents. 90% of Dale Clark could probably move to 84th and Frederick as soon as that space is renovated. It's the 1401 Jones Street that has the nuances. So before we even put out the RFP, we got a construction schedule from the owners of 1401 Jones that showed us what that construction timeline would look like to deliver the corn shell, and included in that is the consideration for tenant improvement. So that's why we felt comfortable in, but you're right. I mean, three weeks is three weeks. That's three weeks that the owner's rep isn't going to be able to engage those folks, isn't going to be able to go out and try to start soliciting proposals for a design team, isn't going to be able to start talking to folks about, you know, do you have the construction services available? Do we need to start procuring new furniture fixtures and equipment for the new 1401 Jones Street? Three weeks is three weeks, yeah.
We definitely have a supply chain issue going on as well in this country, and I just have to believe we're going to be jammed up at the end of that nine months trying to get things done. I did want to speak to the one thing that Mr. Palermo talked about. I've driven by that property as well, and it is pretty rough. But, you know, I've driven by that property, the Voightman property, and that's pretty rough. And, you know, if we can deliver on the Voightman property, a project like we saw today and approve it, I think the contractor can probably deliver on 1401 Jones with an equally exciting project. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. When I asked Troy and Matt to comment on the contract, I forgot, I had asked Mr. Nadel to come off mute, so he might be able to comment, too. So I want to circle back and ask Mr. Nadel to make any comments he might have as it relates to the contract if something weren't approved as it relates to the leases in a few weeks. Jay?
Jay Nadel, 2285 South 67th Street, Exarban Village. I just want to say that, you know, if it came to be that there was a decision to not approve one or both of the leases, we're certainly amenable to substituting locations within our agreement. But I'd like to speak for just a second to the schedule here. The first thing that really needs to happen is the engagement with the library board of trustees and the library staff. And irrespective of where these functions are to be relocated, that engagement is very important and it needs to get started. The community needs to get a jump on that. The other things, searching for a design partner, searching for a construction partner, those can all, those two processes can begin as well. They aren't dependent on either one of these two locations. Getting into design and bidding construction certainly is dependent on specific locations, but the work that's required, the work effort and the time that's required to get to that point is a bit time-consuming and really needs to get started. We'll do this either way. We're here to help. But I think I would encourage the council to move forward with the agreement so that at least the engagement piece of this and the identification of potential design and construction partners and the respective RFPs for those scopes of work can get started. Otherwise, it's really three or four weeks, however long it takes, where everybody's just kind of treading water and the work isn't beginning, the engagement isn't beginning.
Thank you. I think that's an important point to be made, that what work can be done and needs to be done in spite of the approval of the leases is independent of the approval of those leases. So that's the point I wanted to make sure I got across. I will make one other comment. My friend here to the right, who talked about the earlier project we saw of the, what can be done with older structures on Saddle Creek, and I actually represented the ownership of this building years ago, trying to sell it at that point. So, you know, is it in rough condition? Yes. Does it have potential? It has incredible potential. I think with the right team, you know, with the right architectural team and that engagement of input from stakeholders of what might be included in that facility going forward, I think it could be, I think it could be a tremendous facility. But again, I wanted to make the point that in spite of the leases, and now having heard Mr. Nadel say that they would, they could substitute the locations in the agreement, that it doesn't necessarily have to be tied to those two locations. Again, I think it might be important to make sure that we get this ball going. So again, please consider that when you're making your vote today.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hey, folks, listen up. We have a library right now downtown that we own. So for the executive branch of the government to put this on the agenda in a backwards timeline, it doesn't matter to me, whether it's three weeks or however long it takes. That's not my fault. This should have been presented a different way. We're not in a crunch here. We have a library. Is everybody listening? We have a library, okay? And if it moves, it moves. But it's not my fault that the way this was presented is backwards, and I'm sorry. That's just the way it is. There's so much work that needs to be done, maybe not on ShopCo, who knows? I don't know what it was last. But I'm sure the wheels are not stopped on that. And I can probably ask either Planning or Public Works, here's a question for you, because you heard there's parking spots that need to be added. I don't even know if you can walk across a sidewalk. The side door's boarded up. I think one of the front windows has a board across it. With these improvements that we're moving forward with, with street scape or parking stalls or whatever it may be, will this three-week layover, and I don't know who's responsible, so we'll start with Public Works, will this delay the work going on there?
Again, I'm not familiar with the project from the standpoint of what the potential identified improvements are, but obviously, we always look at it from the perspective is that you look at your construction season and you identify what's going to happen, whether it's inside work or outside work. So obviously, if it's outside work, we always like to do a majority of the work during the period of time when the temperatures and everything are conducive to that work taking place.
Okay, thank you. Planning- Planning, is three weeks going to hold up any permits that would have to be approved or plans that you would see on this project?
Eric England, Planning Department. It is my understanding, there is a building permit that is very close to being issued and approved. I do not know the arrangement on this or the scope of work. I know that there is some interior furnishing, some windows, street scaping, I don't have many details beyond that, but I guess I'll leave it at that.
I appreciate it. And my point was, we here at the city can continue to move forward on this building if we're going to move forward. Again, it's not my fault that this should either be before or coincide with actual lease on the buildings, otherwise, as we heard from law earlier, this isn't necessary. I'm not discrediting the work you put into this, I appreciate it, you answered even more questions than I had. But the bottom line is, I'm sticking with my motion to lay this over until February 1st. Vote for it or don't vote for it. I need a second.
There was a, yep, there was a second previously, there's no further lights, this is a motion to lay over until February 1st. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Bell.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Mr. President. Yes.
Motion passed, four to three. Item 54, an ordinance to amend, Chapter 13, Article 2, Division 2 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Human Rights.
Item number 54 was postponed from the December 21st meeting, the vote could be today. Councilmember Johnson, do you want the floor?
Yes. First, I would like to thank Dr. Thompson and his staff for their dedication and commitment in drafting this ordinance before us today. Human rights and relations is very important to our communities. Having said that, adequate time should be given to this topic. Unfortunately, due to the holidays and medical concerns, additional time is needed. Therefore, I move that this item is held over until January 25th.
I'll second that motion and just ask Mr. Johnson a question. In our conversations about this item, I know you just had some concerns and may have some proposed work to do, realizing something does need to occur to satisfy what HUD has observed and the work that Mr. Thompson has put into this item so far, but I think, based on your remarks, the holidays happened, there were some health concerns, you just need a little more time, and you proposed two weeks, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Dr. Thompson, do you have a minute, please?
Franklin Thompson, HR in our department.
How are you doing?
1819 Farnham, I'm fine.
Thanks. My memory is that we had very little left, I thought, to discuss on this. I thought we're, and as a matter of fact, the last time this was up for consideration, I know you were advocating to vote for it at that point as well, too. So what remaining issues are there, in your estimation?
In my estimation, the only possible thing that we could just further discuss is the size of the board, whether it's three, four, five, or whatever. And from my time on the board, I thought that that could be handled as a floor motion, and then we go ahead and vote today. However, I want to be open and, you know, willing to work with this council. I would rather we go ahead and work on it today, but will it kill me to wait until the 25th? No. I will have to contact an HUD official and ask for an extension. I have a report due on Monday, which is a strange day for a report to be due on, but it's due on Monday, and it, this issue of not having the Civil Rights Board is a very pivotal part of that report. Two years ago, I said we were going to fix the problem, and so I will have a little egg on my face in that two years later, the problem's not fixed. And part of the problem not being fixed has a lot of things to do out of my control, so, but I'm a big boy, and I'll put on my big-boy underwear and do what I have to do. But I, yes, I can, I can wait to the 25th, especially if I can get an extension on my report. And right now, I'm waiting for that response. So ideally, it would be better to amend it right now and vote on it right now, but at the same time, I want to work with the community.
All right, so what I think I didn't hear you say is that you would have liked it passed last, the last time we considered it, you'd rather have it passed today as well, too.
I don't see, I don't see much to amend, but then again, there hasn't been a lot of conversation from the time that it was laid over until now, and part of that is sickness on my part. But again, I'm used to a council that takes a different route of what you do over layovers. So, but I'm learning a new set of rules, and I'm not pouting, I'm adjusting.
You're very diplomatic. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I also, Dr. Thompson, I appreciate, every time I see you, you're offering, do you want to sit down and talk, do you have any questions? I am going to support Councilmember Johnson's laying this over, not because of the lack of effort or anything on your part. You've been tremendous, and I know, I'm confident in two weeks that we'll get through this and we'll wipe the egg off your face, and you can throw it on mine or whatever you want to do. So I really do appreciate your offering and all your work on this, and I think we're going to get this done in two weeks. Thanks.
I'll cross my fingers and hope I can get that extension, because I know without this vote, I can't send this report in.
I know how talented you are, and I'm very confident you're going to get that extension. You have them call Fesslerson if you've got any trouble.
They're closed on Monday anyway.
Well, he's not known as Pistol Pete for nothing.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, I mean, the only other thing we could do is we could pass it as is, or, I mean, I'd be more than happy to make an amendment, to amend it to five, if that's the only issue out there, and then we can make any other changes later. I mean, it's not like once we pass this, we're stuck with it and it can never be amended. I mean, I think Mr. Kuzi would support me, and, you know, all laws can be changed, so any of these ordinances could be amended in the future.
Yes.
My thought would be to pass this today to make sure you don't have that worry, make sure we're in HUD compliance, and then if we want to amend it to something else later after conversation, we can always make small changes.
Yes, and another thing to keep in mind is that, from what I'm hearing in terms of what the community wants, the things that need to be changed are not the Civil Rights Hearing Board, it's the Human Rights and Relations Board, the first board. The second-
That's not a part of this ordinance today.
Right. So the real changes in terms of nominations, more power, bigger scope, that has to do with our HRR Board, not the Civil Rights Hearing Board. The Civil Rights Hearing Board only has one function, and that function is to, when somebody is given a cause determination, they come in and then that, an arbitrator and the board together decide, okay, this is what the person is due in terms of their restitution or reparations. So the things that the community want to have changed or beefed up is the other board.
Right.
So-
And we can make those changes in the future, as you continue to work.
You can make them as a regular amendment right now, or you can make them part of the Charter Convention change.
Correct.
So it, it's, and this is no shade thrown at anybody, but it seems like we're trying to play Creighton in basketball, but we're going to Dome and playing them to try and play Creighton. Just, for me, it's not making sense.
I would agree, we just need to get this passed, we can make other changes to the other board at a later date.
Yes, and this council can make those changes by themselves, or they can make it through the Charter Convention, too. So either way.
Right, which we'll be doing here in the next year as well.
Right, and I've just been told that that effort is starting to ramp up next week, so.
I did, too. That's true.
Right.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. That's why I'm not supporting the layover, I just, I want to get the Civil Rights Board passed. If there's other issues with the other board, let's work on them, but I don't think we should hold this up, and I don't think we should ever assume that you're going to get a pass from the federal government for anything. So I would, I would caution that overconfidence. I would like to just get this passed, so we're in compliance, and then make changes. Even if we want to make changes to what we're passing today, we're not precluded from doing so. In fact, those changes could be put on our agenda for the 25th, for our very next meeting. So no one's precluded from doing anything, any council member can suggest changes to any ordinance at any time, once you go through a request to law, so.
With my 16 years of being on the council, that's the way we did things.
That's the way we've always done it, yes. Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to lay over two weeks. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Bell.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to three. Item 55, an ordinance to approve an amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Altech Business Park, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 55 is today, proponents, please.
Hi, Reagan Pence with Lamprey and Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, 68154, here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 56, an ordinance to approve the Warhorse Casino Omaha Tax Increment Financing Agreement.
Public hearing on number 56 is today, proponents, please. Mr. Seaton.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, I'm here for any questions you may have.
Other proponents today?
Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Immaculate Street. I am a opponent for this, just as I was the last time. And I don't know how many of you saw the North Fork Senator who introduced a bill in order to make it legislative to prohibit any TIF funds related to a casino and licensed racetrack. I think he's right on track. We shouldn't be giving this money to this tax break to a casino or a racetrack. And they said the last time that it wouldn't get done if you didn't give them the TIF. Now we're right back again, and they wanted another 17, what was it, 17.5? They approved last time, and now we're back again, and this won't get done. That is a joke. You know it, I know it, and anybody else sitting this side. This will get done. It does not have to have the TIF funds in it. We gave money to them before, and that was, it wouldn't get done, that's enough. So, short, sweet, to the point, thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm also against it. I read a little bit about this bill earlier today. I want to submit this into the record. If a state senator down there that supposedly has a little more power in the law than you guys do understands TIF this way, the way most of us have been trying to get you to talk about, then I don't understand why you guys don't understand it this way. The TIF comes off on the back of the taxpayers, whether you want to say so or not, because somebody has to make up that revenue. You can't wait 20 years for the builder of that casino to pay it off. That doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So you better rethink the whole thing about TIF. The state is setting the way on this with this bill, and I think you should pay attention to that.
Can you hand that to the city clerk there?
It's another one of those special laws that the state constitution says we will not pass.
Any other opponents today on number 56?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I often look at your, the TIF projects that are being approved by the council, and it seems like they're everywhere in the, on your agenda. So I'm wondering why the others are resolutions and this is an agreement. Obviously, there's a lot of information that the community needs to understand, but I do understand the financing part, and that is that you guys are foregoing tax money so that the project can move forward, because supposedly, there's a but for. And like I said, I don't, I don't think so. This is a lot of money. These public improvements that TIF finances raises the value of the property, too. So I think that if the developers want a nice space, then they should pay for it, too. Look at their capital stack and find that kind of financing, because it's going to increase the value of their property. I'd also encourage the developer and all the others that want tax increment financing to not just look for opportunities, but to also create opportunities, especially in blighted areas as the community understands it, and not as the state of Nebraska defines it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure we clarify something, that this is not an additional amount of $17,500. What we did before was redevelopment plan, this is redevelopment agreement for the same project.
Thank you. No further lights, next items.
One public hearing can be held for items 57 through 59, ordinances to levy a special tax assessment for Weeds Group 2022-01, Litter Group 2022-02, and Trees Group 2022-03.
Public hearings on items number 57, 58, and 59 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings are closed.
One public hearing can be held for items 60 through 64, ordinances to levy a special tax assessment for Benson Business Improvement District, Blackstone Business Improvement District, Dundee Business Improvement District, Alcorn Business Improvement District, and North 24th Street Business Improvement District.
Public hearings on items 60, 61, 62, 63, and 64 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Please come down.
Honorable President, Councilwomen and Councilmen, my name is John Poyota, 2501 Ames Avenue. I just, I have a few concerns, and I hope that you can bear with me, because I may have a few questions, if that's okay? Mrs. Johnson, again, thank you for your service with the North Omaha area, you've done an amazing job, and three times what your predecessor has done in his entire career. Thank you. Mrs. Johnson, could you answer a question for me, please?
So you can't ask questions of the council, you may present some testimony, if a council member wishes to ask you a question, they may.
Okay.
And which item are you testifying on?
Pardon?
Which item are you testifying on? Which item are you testifying on?
64.
Okay, thank you.
Danny Robinson asked Ms. Johnson which office to go to to receive information pertaining to this special...
Special assessment?
Yeah, special assessment. Ms. Johnson, which office was that that Danny went to?
So I would encourage us not to be answering questions from the podium.
Okay. Well, the reason why I mention that is because he went to this office. And I'd like to be factual with you, but I can't tell you which office he went to because he doesn't recall the office. And he asked Mrs. Johnson who directed him to that office. So I'm not asking questions of you. I just don't want to be ambiguous, and I would like to be more specific with you with the office that he went to inquire.
Okay. If Ms. Johnson wants to address that, she can by turning her light on.
Okay.
Continue.
Okay. So he went to the office, and he asked a few questions pertaining to 64, which is just some general... And I apologize for the glasses are a prescription, and I didn't bring my clear ones today.
Yeah.
But I'm blind without them, but I can't see with them.
They look good.
Thanks. What, how, who, why, and when? We'd like to know the exact amount of the money, the dispersment of the funds went to whom, the scope of the funds, where were they to be utilized? Why were the funds dispersed to these parties? And why we, Los Diablos, were never included in any dialogue concerning the dispersments or the agreement to disperse money? But now that you've accrued this debt, now we're responsible for repaying this loan, right? So we were never...
I'm not sure we know where that phone's coming from, but continue while I try and get through it here.
Boy, that's loud. That's not my phone. My phone's not here. I'm silent. It's Danny's phone.
I don't think it's in the audience, so that's... That's on us, so we'll try and figure it out, but keep going.
Okay. So, we were not a party to the funds when they became available, which I believe were dispersed to the BID. And unfortunately, I was ill during the last meeting. But I believe the funds were dispersed to the BID's president's husband for a barber shop or something, you know? And so I've got all of these questions. I've got no answers. Mr. Robinson went to that office a month ago. The individual at the office told him that he would email him all of the data that he requested, which were pertaining to the dispersments, the numbers, who they went to, right? 30 days later, he's got no information. No one ever followed up. So to me, it screams chicanery, corruption, and nepotism, right? The president of the BID gets all these funds dispersed to her husband. You know, the only thing that we've heard from the BID is negative things. Trying to get us shut down by the police department, harassing us. I guess the best word to describe it is like hyperbole, is what I get from the BID. You know, these outrageous comments of things that we've been doing. And then...
So I want to also just insert...
Right. But we're not involved in the dialogue concerning the dispersment of money. We're never involved in the dialogue that we even belong to the BID. We're never involved in the dialogue that who's...
I'm going to stop you right there just to say, I think we understand those concerns you're expressing. And I think that is something that should be...
But now we're responsible to pay.
I'm talking for a minute.
Okay.
And that is something that maybe the BID should address. But I want to remind folks what we have on our agenda today. Our special assessments, the result from an ordinance that's currently in place that has been confirmed by the Board of Equalization, and then just comes to the council for that confirmation of what's already in the city code and would not change today. If there's issues you have with the BID or communication problems that it sounds like you may have, I'd encourage you to take that up with them. That's not what we're discussing.
Well, I have a problem with paying this assessment.
You can certainly challenge the assessments, but the issues you're describing are not issues we're going to address today.
Well, I have a problem with the assessment because basically, the people that are being assessed had no process in the money's dispersment, right? It's insane. So why should the people be liable to pay that money back, taxpayers, landowners, when they were never a part of the process of the dispersment of those funds? So all I ask for you is, and what I hope, is that we can pull out this item, number 64, so we can address the issue at a later date and give us more time.
Okay, thank you. Other opponents today?
Cheryl Weston, 1811 Immett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm on item number 64. And part of the problem, just as the gentleman before me, and I fully realize this is just a public hearing today, but that's the part of the problem.
And it's also just the tax assessment, right? That's what we're talking about.
I understand that. Part of the problem is because people weren't involved, didn't really have a good understanding of what this was that was being signed on to, the ordinance and so forth. And so people are coming and they're saying, I don't understand what's happening now. All of a sudden, this tax assessment is going to be... I have no idea, didn't even know I was a member of it. So that's the reason why I'm just trying to explain as to why people are upset in this and want to question, how do we go about it? So maybe we have to go to our city council representative, Ms. Johnson. If you can help us out, is to give the time before the 25th? Or at that time, at the 25th, I don't know if two weeks is really enough time for you to be able to get something, a meeting or something set up. But that's what people are asking for, is they're not objecting so much as to have to. It's just like you. You don't want to pay for something if you don't know what you're paying for. And it should be more explained. There was no... Is there or was there any input? Just as this gentleman said, there wasn't anything that was said to him. Someone came to me and said, I don't know what this is about. I never heard anything before of it, and now didn't even know I was part of it or whatever. So that's what people are trying to get. We understand. And maybe if there'd been a better public hearing before, we wouldn't be coming here and having these questions to be explained that this is an assessment. Didn't know they could even go to the Equalization Board because they didn't know that they were going to be assessed. So I think it's just a matter of being able to have this type of a public hearing in order to get information out and back to the other end, to the community, to understand what's going on and why this is. Is this the first? So we would like to have that kind of conversation as you started earlier. Ms. Johnson, conversation does help. It does make a difference. It makes it clear. And we'd like to even have an investigation to know, how did they come to these assessments and how they been? So thank you very much for that time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Good afternoon. Danny Robinson, 5354 North 28th Avenue. Yes, my concern is also the same as the two people who spoke before me. However, when you see money being asked for from you, from money that was borrowed by the BID or given to the BID for the North Omaha Development, and you see the president of that organization and various members' businesses being improved right in front of your face, you're going to call that into question. You know, the church right there on 24th and Ohio just underwent a development there, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Gilbert Barber Shop, you know, a lot of money. We've seen that. I've been living in North Omaha my whole life. I used to go to Gilbert Barber Shop and get my hair cut. My grandmother used to be a member of the church right there on 24th and Ohio. So I knew the condition of that church. I went there recently. It's a very beautiful place. The BID, from what we know, was established in North Omaha around 2017, 2019 sometime. And these places have improved since then. Well, now we're being taxed to pay these monies back. We have no idea what's going on. All we get is a letter in the mail saying we have to pay these extra assessments. And, you know, being our group in North Omaha, we understand the terminology for that. It's called pimping and pandering. So we believe we've been pimped, and we'd like to know where these monies went. And I'm the gentleman that asked Ms. Johnson to take me upstairs to speak with the individual over this money being advocated to North Omaha. He assured me he would send me that information, I'd have received it. So of course, of course, we're going to question this. We want to know what's going on. If you're going to ask us for our money, we want to know where it's being spent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm kind of conflicted about this, but I am an opponent because these kinds of assessments and taxes are the lifeblood of a business improvement district. However, this setup is coming from the state of Nebraska. And I've commented to the council before that you've got to find a local way to incentivize redevelopment. So just going off these complicated setups, actually, they're layers, okay? Because I work and eat at a business improvement district, and it's a lot of money. You're asking the property owners to pay for these taxes for this revenue to go to the business improvement district, but it's really going to be the people that go to the business improvement district to spend their money, who are ultimately going to be paying for this. Now, this is supposed to be a business improvement district, but you go there, it's a lot of money compared relatively to other places in Omaha because of these layers. So, like I said, I work at a business improvement district, so I'm getting paid. But other people, when they want to go out and spend their money, they're going to be the ones, they're going to pay for the extra assessment because that's business. The business owner is going to pass on the expense to the customer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I think what you're gathering here today is some citizen disapproval, some citizen irateness. And rightfully so. Because like four or five of these items here, you don't say who is going to pay the special tax assessment. Now, do you really want 20,000 people coming down to your office to ask you to explain that? I don't think so. They ought to be able to get an explanation from you here. But of course, your rules say that unless you invite me to stay or invite me to ask questions, the citizen has no input. And there's only one person on that side of the room that controls that, and that's Pete Festerson. He cuts some people off, he doesn't cut others off.
And I'm getting close to doing that again, Larry, because you're not talking about taxes.
I'm against this for those reasons, Pete.
All right, thank you. Other opponents today?
I've seen these things happen in Benson, Dewey Avenue. You come in with all these nice things that sound very good, and then all of a sudden, the property owners that are still there get a property set tax assessment. They weren't told that. They were not part of... You heard them. They were not part of the discussion. You need transparency.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents on these items today?
Good afternoon. James Bennett, 5361 North 33rd Avenue. I'll make it short and sweet. I work for City Omaha Street Maintenance Department. And I applaud you for advocating for us as far as races and stuff. I am confused about this. This is short and to the point. I see the tax assessment coming in the mail, and I am unaware about it. I don't know anything about it. I just know that it says that we owe. And I'm trying to figure out why do we owe? So my question is, like the gentleman said before, I just need some clarity about it, some transparency about it, and to find out what's really going on. Because if I feel like if I didn't pay for something, or I didn't borrow no money or anything like that, I feel I shouldn't have to never paid nothing back. So that's my question right now. That's all the answer I'm trying to get. Why do I owe some taxes that I have no idea what it's about? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes. This question is for Mr. Kucy. I have several questions. Can you explain the role of a business improvement district?
Isn't... Mackenzie Law Department, business improvement districts are formed in certain parts of town to work on improving businesses for certain districts, such as the Benson one, the North 24th Street one, the Alcorn one, all the ones listed on the agenda today.
Okay. And so the following questions are to kind of get to a space for those that have came to the mic and wanted to know how they were assessed this amount. So how is property owners assessed that are within a business improvement district?
How are the property owners assessed? The BID is created by an ordinance. There was a public hearing and a public vote on every ordinance that created every single one of these districts. These districts then have these boards that run the district, excuse me, that run the business improvement districts. And people are notified that way. So the notion that people were not informed of this is somewhat inaccurate in the sense that when these were formed by way of ordinance, there was the same three reading public hearing that we had today to form all of those and to form the rules governing all of those.
So this assessment, how were each property owner notified?
I have no way of knowing that.
Who would be notified? Who would know that information?
I don't know. There you go. The city clerk.
Go ahead.
Oh, really? So property owners are notified twice. They're notified once when the BID is created, when the ordinance is being considered. And then they're also notified when the BID is going to the Board of Equalization.
So they're notified twice, once when it was formed, and once when they are going to the Board of Equalization. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the letters go to the property owners.
So the Board of the BID, how is it determined what amount each property owner should be assessed?
Are you asking law again?
Yes.
Mackenzie Law Department, I believe that is in the originating or incorporating documents of the BID and included within the ordinance.
Okay, so for example, in this ordinance, there was something about a dollar per foot, per foot or something like that. So how does the property owners know how much money was given by the city of Omaha?
I don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
So this ordinance gave this BID a specific amount of money, correct?
I don't believe that's accurate.
So we're trying, they're trying to figure out how they are being assessed.
I understand what they're trying to figure out. The way by which they're trying to figure it out is difficult in the sense that they're claiming that they didn't get this information. The clerk's office has indicated that they received this information to the property owners. I don't know if they're the property owner or a lessee of the property, and it went to someone else, the person who actually owns it. I don't know the particular circumstances. But in this type of format or forum, this probably isn't the best way to accomplish what they're trying to accomplish. What they should do is go to the BID and contact them. Or when property owners are notified about these, to appear for the Board of Equalization and speak at that time, since the council item on the agenda today is for the assessment, not for the actual imposition that occurred. That occurred at the Board of Equalization level.
So for this group that is wanting additional information as to why they're being... So, for this group that is wanting additional information as to why they're being assessed that amount, they need to go to the BID and get that information. If they're unable to get that information from the BID, then their only other recourse is to go to the Board of Equalization. Is that correct?
Mack Cusy Law Department, what I was saying is, when they get the notification of the assessment, was it whether it is them or the property owner, they need to come to the Board of Equalization hearing to make their case to the council. This point with the assessments, we are beyond the point of making the case to the council. This is for the imposition of the assessment, not for the determination of the assessment.
Daniel, can you come up? You had a question, please.
Danny Robinson, 5354 North 28th Avenue. I own six properties in North Omaha, and I have not received one letter from anywhere from the BID that they're going to assess my taxes. I didn't know anything about the BID. I'd never met Levanya Goodwin, who's supposed to be over our district in that area with the BID, until we were called down here dealing with some legal matters with the Los Angeles Motorcycle Club. So, we had no understanding of that. But my question is, why don't our BID representatives contact us? If they're going to take our money to revitalize our area, then they should communicate that with us. If you have my number, my address to send me a letter in the mail, saying that you sent me a letter in the mail from the BID that we never received, then why couldn't you send me a letter in the mail saying that, "My name is Ms. Levanya Goodwin, I represent the North Omaha District, and we'd like to communicate with you"? We just want to be involved. If you're going to take our money, involve us in it.
So, for you guys that are here for the BID, what I would do as your city representative is to take you through the process, to provide the education that you need regarding this BID, and what processes that you need to take in order to get the necessary answers that you need. Based on what our lawyer has said, Matt Cusy, he's saying that this format here is not where you need to get your answers. So, we'll defer this at this time, so that we can get those answers, and we can begin on getting those, like, starting tomorrow.
We would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a better job of saying that than I did upfront. Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I think, just, I don't know if it'll help clarify some of the issues that are maybe trying to be addressed here, but, so, these, this BID, I think, as was stated in the cover letter, operates maybe a little differently. In others, they have an operating budget, because of maybe the size of them, they're larger, they assess on an annual basis, they have a budget that they expend every year on projects within that district. This one, I believe, expends money on projects and then submits the bill, or those invoices to the city for payment. So, these were four thousand two hundred dollars and change of expenses that were incurred and then billed, or if you will, then submitted to the city for repayment. So, the projects, I'm making some assumptions here, the projects then, within this forty-two hundred dollars and change, were projects that were voted on by the BID, and then, once they were voted on, then the monies were spent, and then the invoices are submitted to the city for payment. So, if there's some issues as it relates to how the monies were spent, I think that's obviously an issue for the BID to be asked, how those were, you know, what those were spent on for improvements within the business improvement district. And again, I don't know if, the last gentleman that was up here, Danny, I believe, and I missed his last name, Robinson, mentioned something about six properties. Danny, I don't know if all six of those properties are within the defined area of the BID. If they're not, then those properties aren't going to be assessed. So, again, I don't know if that helped clarify or muddy the waters, but I thought it was important to maybe explain, at least on this BID, how the expenses are incurred and paid for.
Thank you. No further lights? Next item.
I have a question.
Public hearing's over, Larry. Item 65, please.
Item 65, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District for the West Papio Trail Millard Connection.
Public hearing on number 65 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Williams, thanks for staying with us.
Good afternoon, evening, everyone. Good to see you. Eric Williams, Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District. Our business office is 8901 South 154th Street. I'm here, I have a little information, which I guess, oh, you know what? It's fine, let's skip through it. The West Papio Trail between Harry Anderson Ave. and Millard Ave. is a project...
Hey, guys, I'm going to interrupt you just for a minute. We need you to stay quiet in the audience, please. We still have some more items to go. Continue.
Thanks very much. The Papio Missouri River NRD works with the City of Omaha and other government agencies in the metro area region to design and construct trails for recreation, active transportation, and access to natural resources. The NRD has worked to construct over 130 miles of trails in the metro area region, including every district in the city of Omaha. Recent partnerships include the South Omaha Trail, connecting between the Keystone Trail and the Field Club Trail, the Turner Boulevard Trail, connecting between Midtown Crossing and Creighton University, and the Belt Line Trail, which is currently preparing for construction in North Omaha. Looking forward, the NRD is focused on expanding access to the existing trail network and providing additional connectivity to places where people live, work, and play. A conceptual study was conducted for the West Papio Trail Millard Connection in 2018, and that identified adjacent infrastructure projects which were needed to be completed prior to the trail construction beginning. Those projects have now been completed through a collaboration between the City of Omaha and the NRD, and we are now prepared to submit documentation for federal funding for the process of design and construction of this section of West Papio Trail. It's about one mile long. It starts at the south end on Harry Anderson Ave., connects under Q Street, 132nd Street, and up to Millard Ave., and on the north end, connects to the West Papio Trail, which goes by Zirinsky and through West Omaha, all the way up to Flanagan Lake. When the West Papio Trail is completed, it will stretch from Flanagan, about 32 miles, all the way down through Omaha, Millard, La Vista, Papillion at Bellevue, and down to the Missouri River. It's going to be an excellent facility, and this is one of the two remaining critical connections between the existing facilities, so that people have access to all of the recreation up and down the West Papio Trail corridor. Again, this is 80% federal funded. The remaining 20% will be divided, 10% to the City of Omaha, 10% to the NRD. The NRD will administer the design and construction of the project, and the city will take over operations and maintenance once the project is completed. Both the city and the NRD are looking forward to additional projects in the future, using federal funding through this same mechanism. Glad to continue working with the city on these excellent projects. And I just appreciate all of the work that the city, both the Parks Department, Public Works Department, and Planning Department have put toward trails as a method of expanding recreation, active transportation, and access to natural resources. And I look forward to completing this project with the assistance of the city. Thanks very much for your time. I appreciate your listening this late evening.
Yes. Well, thank you, and before you leave, I want to thank you publicly, too, for your dedication and passion to our trail system. We met on site recently on some potential new trails and new connections that I know you're working hard on, and it takes someone with your dedication and passion to get these done, and I do think you're making a difference, and we appreciate it.
Thanks very much. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, have a good evening.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 65?
Luis Humana, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I'm a opponent, and I agree with you that Mr. Williams is, if he's supporting it, I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, too, wanted to thank Mr. Williams for your work on that. It's hard, I know it's hard to believe, but that is the trail that I like to ride. And this will allow me, literally, to be able to ride from my house all the way to Bellevue. And so, I do appreciate your work on that. It's a great trail, safe, and it's relatively flat. So, thank you.
And there's always e-bikes, in case there's not. It's a long way. Thank you. Next item.
Item 66, an ordinance to amend Section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled "Missing Person/Research Specialist."
Public hearing on number 66 is today. Proponents, please.
Deb Xander, City Human Resources, here to answer any questions you might have. I also have with me Chelsea Ship, who is our compensation analyst, to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? I think you're, I think you're good, too. Any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Item 67, an ordinance to accept the bid from Quick City Delivery for inter-office mail services for Public Works in the amount of $18,659.64.
Public hearing on number 67 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 68, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquid storage district, B-210, located at 6789 North 67th Plaza.
Very last item, we have a winner here. Public hearing on number 68 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Levy.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, council members. I don't think I've ever said "good evening" to this group before, so, first time for everything. David Levy, 1700 Farnham Street, Barrett Home Law Firm, here on behalf of the applicant. Tammy Seeler from Emmanuel is with me as well, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 69 through 104 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Second, real call.
Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:05.